Good evening, everybody. This is Wednesday, March 20th. Board of Finance special meeting. Special because it's not tomorrow, Thursday, which was our regular date. I've been asked to remind all the board members and everyone else to make sure to speak directly into the microphone because there have been some sound deficits from the last couple of meetings. So we want to have sound assets. That's what we do. Assets, deficits. We're the Board of Finance. Any public comment?
No.
Okay. No public comment. We're going to start with the administrative officers' report. Tony?
Thank you. I have a report through February, which is the estimated year-end surplus of $1.1 million. As you know, we have an allocation from our fund balance of $800,000 in the budget process. So therefore, our projected year-end increase to our fund balance if we were at year-end would be a little over $300,000, which would leave our fund balance at 14.94% of our annual estimated expenses. Most of our surplus is generated from a few main items which we've discussed previously. First is our interest income at $340,000 surplus. Our interest rates for our earnings are generally around 5.5%, a little less. Intergovernmental revenue, we have generated a surplus of about $230,000, most of which comes from the grant from the state of Connecticut, which is the municipal revenue sharing account. This was anticipated in the budget process and I'm told has not, has been removed from next year's budget.
Has not?
It has been.
Oh, dear.
And we didn't budget for it next year, so that's okay. It sort of relies on the state's revenues and their income taxes receipts and other receipts that they receive. And so it's sort of a never really guaranteed item to begin with, which is why most towns do not budget for it. Secondly, another item that we consider is in December, the town awarded a 2.5% cost of living adjustment for all ASME and non-union personnel. So funding requests with contingency will be necessary to cover these increases because they were not originally budgeted in each department in this budget. So we hope to have that for your next meeting. So that'll use a fair amount of our contingency. I have a contingency analysis or update that I'll show you later on in the meeting. Police Department, we've discussed this previously, but they had budgeted to receive funds from the Woodbridge Board of Education for their SRO. Because the SRO is no longer used in Woodbridge, there's a, it creates an anticipated deficit in their budget. They did up to four vacancies this year, so I'm hopeful they'll be able to cover that. I wanted to mention that to you. Retirement has generated a surplus this year of about $175,000 due to restructuring by the state of Connecticut. But we've had some, a little bit of a deficit in healthcare due to some coverage changes. So we're about $100,000 surplus in our benefits line. And finally, AMITI has, the school district has reduced our March payment by $462,000.
Okay.
So those are your major items. It's mainly the interest income, the state grant revenue, and the AMITI funds as essentially the three large items.
Was it 2.5% increase across the board?
For all, except for police. Police contract has not settled.
Tony, do you know if the SRO transition at Beecher, is that permanent?
As far as I know.
Okay. So I remember that came up, the staffing challenges that we had last year.
Right, right. So then, so they, the officer who was there retired.
Right.
Right. He is now hired directly by the board, and therefore, his position is now in the police budget, but it's not being reimbursed by the board. So therefore, it creates a little bit of an issue because we had originally, we had previously received reimbursement from the Board of Education for that position. So now, we can cut the position, right? So at the police position, it's like one of their sworn officers. It was just assigned to the school.
Yeah.
So we didn't actually cut the position when he, you know, they said, "We don't need an SRO anymore." Sworn officer as an SRO.
I wish I'd thought of that earlier because I wonder if that staffing position was budgeted for when they were doing their planning presentation because they did ask for, I think, one or two more office, you know, full-time officers.
They did.
So they've got an excess of one now going forward.
Correct. So they asked for one, and this is essentially, I mean, he was always a member of their force, but he spent a lot of time at the school.
Right.
Now that position doesn't spend that much, does time at the school, so it is essentially an additional, additional help.
I always hesitate to use the word permanent. It's in effect at the moment until something changes.
Fair point.
Okay? But yeah, it's the status quo for now.
Thank you.
It's a good question. You want to talk about WBOE financial situation? Under your report?
I, yeah, I could just tell you the, it's in your, yeah, it's in your package. And their current over/under, there looks like they have a surplus there of about $297,000.
Okay.
I typically don't carry their surplus in, in my numbers until we get close, until the end of the year.
Okay. And what about the municipal fiscal indicator review?
So there's been a fair amount of discussion about our fund balance in recent months, and there's been some discussion at the Board of Selectmen level. So I thought it would be helpful to provide you a review of some of, some fiscal sort of indicators that are used in the credit markets. When we go to get a credit rating from, we go to Moody's, there are three credit rating agencies. There's Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's, and Fitch. We typically go to Moody's. And there's a number of things they look at. We are AAA rated municipality, which means it's the highest credit rating you can get. And there are 15, I think they're here?
Yes.
Yep, 15 total municipalities in Connecticut that are AAA rated. And so you can see the list of municipalities. For those listening, it's Greenwich, Ridgefield, Fairfield, Wilton, Avon, New Canaan, Westport, Woodbridge, Simsbury, Farmington, Darien, Glastonbury, Norwalk, Madison, and Weston. So one major item that is, is the unassigned general fund balance percentage of revenues or expenses. You could really do either one. This data is, I believe it's a few years old just because it takes a while to get all the information together from each agent, from each town. So the state puts out an estimates book, fiscal indicators book, which is on their website, OPM, which is where a lot of this information is from. But you can see ours at the time was 14%. And you can see we're right in the middle of the group. So we've had a, we have pretty average results when it comes to our fund balance as a percentage of our revenues and expenditures. One area we are always low on with this group is our grand list data. So you can see our grand list per capita is towards the bottom here. And that's just, you could, you know, you could tell the four towns that are much higher than all the other towns in the category.
And that's the same 15 towns?
Same 15 towns.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just reshuffled based on the, where they fall in this group. One area, so some of these items, you have a lot of control over, some you have no control, and some you have a little bit of control over. So for instance, this next one, debt service is a percentage of operating expenses. We do well. And you can see we're towards the bottom in terms of we're towards a lower end of that. So that's a good thing if you're, if you're being rated from a credit perspective. Net debt per capita, sort of right in the middle. That's, so that would be our debt per person. So it's sort of a metric that's used. Debt burden, again here, so interestingly, our debt per capita is average and our debt as a percentage of our budget is low, but when you look at it as a percentage of your grand list, we're at the top, because of the grand lists of some of these other communities are so large.
So much higher.
Much higher.
Yeah.
Per capita income, say we're a little, slightly less than average, but do pretty well there.
Is this on an individual basis or a household basis?
This is, I don't know, no.
Just curious. Okay.
Median home value. Unemployment rate, that's very low.
It says the median home value is $627,000.
That's the median, yes.
Median.
Median in the group.
Interesting.
Yeah. And unemployment rate, and finally, tax collection rate.
Woo-hoo. Yep. Wow.
So I just thought you'd find that, you know, interesting.
Any questions for Tony on that? I think that's.
It's good information.
Personally, it's very good information, and it's very good to have the context for where we are and the responsible thing to do, and the responsible thing, not the irresponsible thing to do.
Right.
And it looks to me like we're handling this very responsibly.
Also appears, Tony, that the grand list, any of the percentages when taken against the grand list, that's where we start to.
Clearly, that's the area where we are not nearly as strong as the other communities in this group. I think Simsbury is along the lines of Woodbridge, but other than that, the others are much higher. So that's why it's important to keep some of the other items on the higher side in terms of fund balance or, and it is, while it's used in a credit, from a credit rating perspective, it's just a general, these are just general signs of, you know.
Fiscal health.
Financial health.
Yeah, fiscal health.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Tony on this? I think it's pretty interesting stuff. We're going to continue our policy review per meeting with the, with the idea that at some point after the budget process, we're going to actually vote and update all the policies. So rather than try and study them all at one meeting, we're going to do a couple every time. And today, Tony's going to teach us about structurally balanced budget policy.
Some of this may seem like common sense. I can tell you that in some places it's not done, which is structurally balanced budget. Essentially, such, the basic point behind a structurally balanced budget is ongoing expenditures should be covered by ongoing revenues. These sort of tie together, these two policies, so that to the extent you have, you know, ongoing revenues like fees, interest income, grant revenue that you get every year, that you continue to get every year, should balance to spend against expenditures you get every year, like salaries. So that's one. A second part of it is that you should handle one-time revenues specific to one-time expenditures. It's sort of the second policy. You should, if you want to use reserves, you should only use reserves in the context of returning to a structural, a structurally balanced budget. So if you have an expenditure that's one-time expenditure, that's usually large, you can use reserves or short-term revenues for that purpose. But like sometimes, a structurally unbalanced budget for a town could be, they have a huge debt service one year for some reason, or a large settlement charge for some sort of legal settlement or something, I don't know, that you could use short-term revenues for or for capital if you have a large capital issue. But generally, you try to keep a structurally balanced budget. That's the, that's the policy that we, we do here. And the second one just tells you why one-time revenues policy is so important, sort of connected to the first.
Mm-hmm.
So when we receive a one-time revenue, we tend to use it for non-recurring expenditures, typically capital, acquiring a capital asset. One time, we received, this was back a few years ago, we received a one-time revenue for, it was when we had the sewer sale. We sold the sewer assets. That was back in the mid 2000s. And we used it for, to buy, was one to fund a fire truck, and then I think it was for some open space.
Wasn't there COVID money that also came in the last few years that you would call one-time revenue?
We didn't receive, most of our COVID money we received were for reimbursements.
Of reimbursement.
For COVID-related expenditures.
Okay. So that's a big difference, obviously.
Right, right.
Okay. I couldn't recall. Any questions? Discussion? Anybody against a structurally balanced budget policy?
Sounds good.
Good.
All right, good. Moving on. I need a motion to approve the minutes of February 15, 2024.
Some moves.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, discussion, concerns? In that case, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? No. Okay. I need a motion to approve the Board of Finance minutes of March 7, 2024.
Some more.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions, concerns? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Objections? No abstentions. Okay, good. All right. The next budget item is the meat and potatoes. We need to talk about the Board of Finance budget recommendations where we are. By way of context, I think we all remember that at our last meeting, we talked about the Board of Finance adjustments that they voted on.
Whole package.
And Tony and his team, we've talked, we've talked a lot about things that can be done. And I know they've worked very hard. We've met a few times.
Thanks.
Just chatting, and I think you've got some recommendations that you want to share with us.
Yes, I do.
This is one set?
One set, yep.
One set.
Yeah, I think I have.
You have one for yourself?
Yeah. You need one more down there?
Yes.
Pass that down to Karen. And Karen.
I'm sorry.
Do you need another one down there?
Yeah.
All right, we're good. It's always reassuring when the Board of Finance can count the number of copies that are required.
Do you need another one? Zip one out and sheet.
No, I think.
No, we're good.
I have one. Oh, we do need one more. I have these. Wait a minute, I have what we talked about.
Yeah, that's the same thing.
Yeah. We're all set.
Oh, is it the same one that you met?
Yeah.
You gave me.
Yeah, that's what I gave you.
Okay, we're good then.
So there's a few documents I just want to review with you. The first is, these are some possible adjustments that we had been discussing and that have come up since we last met. That's the first page, which we can review. The second is, just incorporates these adjustments into the final, last column of the sheet, which is the Board of Finance recommended budget. Also included in that is the latest AMITI figure, which we received based on their, the latest meeting where they recommended, or Board of, adopted a budget or recommended a budget to be voted on. So that's this. And then this last one is just an interesting, I think breaks down the increases by category. So if we can review the changes here, before we review the individual changes, if you look at the summary sheet, results in a 3.6% increase in expenditures. That's this sheet here. It's an 11.84% increase in non-tax revenues. That did not change. The tax amount to be raised in taxes increases 2.71%. And the mill rate for real estate and personal property increases 2.99%. If you, if there's other adjustments you'd like me to make, I can certainly calculate the change. If you have any suggestions on the, on the sheet, I have it here, so I can make any adjustments if you have any. And, and so if you look at the, that would mean a, so based on that budget, the town departments increased 2.64%. The AMITI contribution goes up 4.53%. The Woodbridge Board of Education, Board of Ed is 3.51%, and the capital budget and debt service is 4.10%. So that just gives you a sort of an idea of where each expenditure category is headed. So in terms of the adjustments that we have here, the first two are capital-related adjustments. The first is to reduce the assessor's revaluation budget by $6,000. We'd like to actually fund that in the current year so she can get started. Otherwise, she might not make the deadline for April, for February 1st of 2025, which is when she has to have her revaluation completed.
Okay.
So we're going to fund it in the current year and reduce next year's budget. Second item is to reallocate some additional American Rescue Plan funds to roadway construction, so that'd be $120,000. Those are the capital budget adjustments. The operating budget is, there's an increase to town plan and zoning to additional funding necessary to fund the plan of conservation and development. We originally had $20,000 in the budget. This, the bid we received was for 41,510. The request, requested adjustments, restore funding for a blight officer in the selectmen's budget for $10,000. And there was a request by Human Services to restore $11,500 in funding for additional part-time help in the senior center. If you recall, she had requested that for an additional position. We, we eliminated that request and the benefits that go along with it. But this would be to restore the funding to have two part-time individuals so that she can have extra help without incurring the benefits. So we thought it was a fair compromise.
And they're busy down there.
Yeah, they have a lot of programming. Yeah.
Which is nice to see, which is really good to see.
Great to see.
They do a very good job.
No, they do. They do a super job.
The next.
Is that how we're getting a blight officer for $10,000?
Part-time.
And it's been in the budget.
Extremely part-time, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. We have him currently. And he, we had originally removed it from the budget. I think, Mika, you had some second thoughts on that?
Yeah, originally it was, we wanted to fund a town planner. And I felt it was the right thing to do was to fund it from the money that we had. So we had to cut somewhere. So we felt that the blight officer was in an area where we could potentially cut and see what we can do as time went forward. But after further consideration and relooking at everything that we had and making some changes, I do feel it's a, it's an important role. He does a great job on a part-time basis. He's very responsible with what he does, so I wanted to put it back.
Is he the building inspector?
No.
It's a separate, separate role.
Separate role, separate individual entirely. But he has been, there's been a number of cases, he and I, he sat down with me, we reviewed what he's been doing and how he's been doing it. And in light of that, I feel it's, it's an appropriate thing for the town to keep.
Good to know.
You know.
I know very well. I'm glad you're putting it back in.
Thank you.
It's not necessarily used all the time.
Right.
But when you need it, he does, and he does an amazing job with dealing with the public so the first selectman doesn't have to, you know, take on that role. And if you just see some, I'm sure he showed you some of the photos of his properties that when they started versus what they look like.
Yeah.
It's. That's really good to know.
It's amazing.
Okay.
And he takes the headache away, and the guys cooperate because they realize that there are fines and so, but he does it in a very.
He's got a great way about him.
Yep. Dealing with the public, because it's, it's a hard thing to do. So, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next adjustment is for parks, which we were able to get better pricing on the porta-potties that we have out on the, on the, our fields. And so we are back down to our original budget. We've received final benefit information, healthcare information for, and so we were able to reduce healthcare by $50,000.
Nothing.
And so we're, we're doing very well there. It's a, the increase in healthcare is almost flat this year.
Awesome.
So.
Good.
Yeah. We, we did very well this year. Did a lot of, the selectmen will hear at their next meeting, the, you know, the process and the results of what we went through for that. The Board of Education budget is reduced by $65,000. The telephone and information technology is reduced by $5,000. And then there's a few buybacks amounts that are in total $5,000. So that reduces it by $221,000 over the Board of Selectmen's budget, not including the AMITI change. That's just for our departments.
Can I just ask a quick question? AMITI started out at, at the original was 5.82, correct?
Right.
I know it's going to referendum, so.
Right.
We really don't touch it, but it's now at 4.53.
Right.
And Beecher went from, Woodbridge Board of Ed, from 3.89 to, is that correct?
That's correct. 2.89, 2.51.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, good. Thanks.
And then the towns.
Just to clarify that for the general public.
Yeah, that's good, that was good, yeah. And the town went from 5.51 to 2.81 to 2.64.
Yep.
So those are the adjustments that we've presented here this evening.
So that's where we are.
That's where we are.
Questions, issues, concerns for Tony?
Well done. Good job.
I'm very happy to see more leveraging of the ARPA funds in the adjustments. I don't know if we've got any latitude to leverage that even further, given that.
I'll show you.
Some of the stuff has to be contractually encumbered, you know, by year end, or we lose it.
Glad you asked that question.
Amiga, you might have someone to. Tony, can we talk to speed? Yes. And I couldn't agree with you more. And Tony's got some additional information on that specific. So perfect lead-in.
I anticipated that question.
Because we're all worried about it, believe me. Is that what I have here, Amity? Yeah.
Is this the one that has to be decided by December 31st?
That's it, yeah.
You have to be, you have to be in the, in the boat by.
There's one more for you.
December 31st.
Amazing. The blank time though, it seems so far away.
I already have.
Right. Tell me about it.
ARPA money, and all of a sudden.
It's here.
Yep, wow.
So first, the top section is contingency. I thought I'd give you a snapshot of where we are with contingency.
Yeah.
So the current balance is $367,516. The, the items listed here are items that we removed from the capital budget to fund with our current contingency, and we're able to reduce next year's budget. So that includes the $6,000 we just discussed, center boiler, which Brad mentioned in his presentation, the library roof, and the center cupola, which both are leaking and need to be replaced. Police security, which is for their, their electronic door locking system. And finally, some roofs at the Darling House that are also in tough shape. You can see there's a common thing here with these roofs.
We seem to be leaking. Yeah, okay.
So that leaves $185,000 in contingency, and we're going to need that for the, the cost of living adjustments, which I spoke of earlier. I'm not sure that we'll need the whole thing, but we'll need a good portion of that.
Right.
So that's the top section. Bottom section are the ARPA funds. And so we need to have this money committed to. Committed to means a contract of, by 12/31. So we received 2.0, almost 2.6 million dollars. So far, we've spent $275,000 on the senior center. We've spent roughly half of the $81,000 for the business district on a lotsip application, which is a local transportation capital improvement program. It's a grant that we're looking to get. And the, we've committed to, we've signed a contract for $333,000 for the Center Gym, which we've started. So those are all sent, those are all set, and we're fine with those. In this budget process, we've allocated two different times for roads, which is $150,000 by the Board of Selectmen and $120,000 by the Board of Finance. So that leaves $270,000 for roads. And then we have $333,000 in Grove Improvements for out here. We have $334,000 for the. And then we have $333,000 in Grove Improvements for out here, we have $334,000 for the Community Center, that project is hopeful to go out to bid, I think we're talking next month in April. So hopefully, we'll have those committed to over the summer. And then finally, we have the last project, which is a little under a million dollars in the business district. Now, the, the town has applied for a Lotzip application, which is a grant application where we hope to do some roadway realignments and improvements in the, on AMITI Road, Bradley Road, and Lucy Street. The 2030 Committee, of which Susan is the chair, along with Chris Dickerson, has been working on this for, how many years?
Four.
Four years. And so we're finally at the point where our application should be complete by the end of March. Should we get this grant, it's 11 and a half million dollars. And we're hopeful, by the way, that we're going to get it, where signs are good. We're responsible for the design. The design is roughly a little less than 10%, which would be that million dollars. So that's what that's for.
When do you find out about that?
So we're going to submit the application, the, the grant application in April, and it's about two months, so hopefully by June 30th.
I will tell you that the 2030 Commission is going to hear a lot of these details next week at our meeting on March 26.
The 26th at 6 o'clock, if you're interested.
If you're interested in hearing.
Getting my cast off that day, maybe I'll zoom over.
Yeah. I, I mean, I'm going to tell you, this has been a remarkably slow process. I think it's always slow, but it also happened during a pandemic.
Right.
So it's been, I've learned a lot. It's been really challenging, but I'm delighted through the work of Tony and his people, that finally, we're going to hear something very concrete, no pun intended. Okay, well, we're going to hear something very concrete on the 26th, and then it goes to the next step, so.
You guys need to take a bow on the 2030 Committee, because, don't you agree, Tony?
Yeah, absolutely.
They're unbelievably working so well together.
They worked so great, worked well together, and really, sometimes it's hard to work when you're, you know, dealing with something that might not happen for a while.
It's, it's something that's hard to work with, something that's that abstract while you're wearing a mask. That's all I'm going to say.
Freezing cold down in Neptre, trying to talk to people. Remember those meetings, they're awful.
What else you, getting it started.
So that's where the ARPA funds, if for some reason, one of the, like, the first two, the roads are obviously easy to commit to, you just sign a contract with a vendor, but if for some reason, something happens with the last three, you'd have to reallocate the funds at some point. We're hopeful we don't have to do that.
To another project.
To another project that you can, you can accomplish.
And we've got a few, so.
I was going to say, it's not like, I'm sure there, there are, any other questions?
There's a ready-up question.
Talk into the microphone.
Lines, Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance, two separate lines.
Oh, I just did that to illustrate the, the different levels of cuts, so you can see the, you know, the one I just did.
We did one.
Yeah, yeah.
When they happened, as much as what's happened.
They'll be, yeah.
It's a good question, though, because ultimately, it's a unified budget presentation.
Eventually, yeah, eventually I'll combine them, when I present it. I like to present this at the budget hearing, just so folks know what we're spending the ARPA money on.
Got it.
I did it last year and the year before, so I'll do it again, I'll combine them at that point.
Awesome, thank you.
That's a good idea.
Other questions? Are we satisfied with where this is? Do we want to vote? Yes, okay, well, I'm, I'm very happy to make the motion, but if somebody else wants to make it, these are the numbers.
Go for it.
I'm going to move that we present at the preliminary budget hearing on April 25, 2024, a budget with expenditures of $58,302,95, and non-tax revenue of $6,138, I'm sorry, The amount to be raised by taxes of $52,163,328, resulting in a mill rate of, check me on this, 46.43, and a motor vehicle mill rate of 32.46. Yep?
That's it.
We need a second.
Second.
Is there discussion? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Abstentions? Okay, great, so now we know what we're going to be doing on April 25, 2024, at the preliminary budget hearing, presenting this to the community, that's their opportunity to come in, ask specific questions on the budget, and we'll be there, along with Tony and his team, to answer those questions. All right, good. Okay.
Are we doing it, are we going to target to do it in the gym, Tony, or are we going to?
The gym.
The gym.
The gym, yes.
We talked about that.
I looked on the website, the website has the AMITI auditorium.
Oh, it does?
On our website.
Okay.
We talked about that.
I looked at it, I looked, today, I was just, unless it's changed.
Yeah, I'm really glad you brought that up.
That's good.
I just wanted to make sure we're, we're all in agreement.
Yeah.
Yeah, good, that's good, I'm glad you brought that up.
Because geography is important, and I think it's more effective in the gym, I think most people feel that way, so a return to normalcy, if you will.
And next year, the gym will be, you know, nicer.
Next year, it'll be comfortable, air-conditioned, ventilated gym.
This is pre-construction, yeah.
2025.
Oh, pre-construction, oh, uh-huh.
Right.
Should be all right.
Gotcha.
Good point, thank you, Dwight, I appreciate you bringing that up. Sir, would you like to give us the first selectmen's report?
Sure, on the heels of what you were talking about as far as 2030 Committee and what you're doing now, what we're doing down in the business district, we felt it was important to also take a look at and identify specifically where the state was with the whole Exit 59 interchange work that they've been promising for, or they've been considering for quite some time. With the help of Mayor Ellicur, we were able to, I was able to get the air of the Commissioner of the Department of Transportation, who, who of course, immediately passed me down to one of their, one of his assistants or deputies. We did have a, a number of conversations at this point in time with, with them, but one in particular, just this week, was it this week, or?
Oh, it was this week, yeah.
In particular, so they are, we've identified, had to bring, kind of remind them of their whole proposal, and we did so. So they are taking it under consideration, it's something that we're, we're just going to continue to poke, poke at until some time.
I always said I would be in the home, by the time they finished it, so.
Or by the time it started. By the time they started. So, but we're hopeful that, we feel that that's a very important element, particularly to get the Lotzip grant, to work kind of hand in hand with that.
Right.
So that's something that we're going to make a priority and continue to work on as much as possible.
Excellent.
Wanted to remind everyone again, every chance I get, I want to make sure folks know that the Earth Day is April 27, and we're really planning a very big event with a number of, so it's important if you have, for folks who want information, to look on the website, because there's a lot of things you can do in terms of bringing items that you might have at your home that you want to dispose of and things of that nature. We also did get the Board of Selectmen approval to start charging for their REV, on REV chargers. We actually agreed on a rate of 29 cents per kilowatt hour, and we also, after, if your car, if you keep your car there after it has been fully charged, you get a half-hour grace period before you start being billed $5 an hour. If you keep it on. So, so, and, you know, just an effort to make sure we get as many people have access to it as possible, but we expect to have that cared for, we have little work to do on the library because of some problems we have on that one, but we expect to be able to get this done in the very near future, certainly this month.
Yeah.
So.
Awesome, yeah.
I'm charged up about this.
That was my line.
Just like making gay love.
We are, we continue to do work on the POCD. We've got, we've chosen at this point in time, the vendor that we'll work, work with, which is SLR, if you haven't heard already, we did vote on it, and at this point in time, we've now just got to negotiate the details with them, so we can get that started as quickly as possible. They will be able to start it immediately, since we do have money in this year's budget for part of that, and they, they recognize that, and, and they've afforded us that as a, as an opportunity in terms of going forward, so we'll be able to get that started as soon as we, we care for that. And part of that process will entail working with, with, working with whatever group we choose for consideration on the country club, in terms of what plan. One of the important things from my perspective, and, and as we're talking to the different, there's four vendors who the Board of Selectmen felt we should continue to negotiate with. Tony, myself, and Karen are, are meeting with those, those firms as we speak, and I think one of the most important things so far that's come out of it, in terms of our conversations, is that what's really different about this is this is a master plan, this is true master plan, it takes us from where we are right now, to 15 years down the road on all elements of the property. In other words, if things are, regardless of what we do with the property, it really, it really encompasses activity and what we need to do to make it what, what it should be. So one of the terms that, that I learned, that I really appreciate, in, in terms of their explanation, was non-curated wild versus curated wild, and the expenses associated with either side of that. So a non-curated wild is basically what we have as it goes now. We want to cut down the trees that fall, if you want to, if you want to replace the paths that, that have crumbled, you're curating it, you're managing that property, and there's a, there's an expense for that, but it, and there's a means by which you can get to what you want to get to. And it's interesting, because we've met everyone from, obviously, architects and things of that nature, to ecological architects, and, and, and plant specialists and things of that nature. So it's exciting, because they're, they're coming here with knowledge and understanding as to what we've already, what town folks have already, residents have already looked, or asked for. So it's, it's refreshing, because it's certainly not something we're starting from scratch, but rather, they have a background in terms of what we, where we are, so they recognize that, they need to address a number of different aspects as to, as to what this could be. So I'm pretty excited about that, and that, that'll continue on, so. That's about it, from my perspective, unless you have any questions on anything.
Excellent report.
I thank you for your, for your work on the budget, thank you.
Okay. Are there any liaison reports? Okay, even better. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some moves.
Second.
All set.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody, and thank you.
Thank you very much.